Okay, perfect. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Welcome, everyone, and please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seated. Do we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Is it worked?
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries. We'll just move on into the work, the budget work session. Alright, so it's my understanding we have a presentation and supplemental handouts to that presentation. And the intention tonight is not to do the presentation, but it's there for you to refer back to. It has some context for us, but Jessica put together this packet and so we'll just go through the kind of the worksheets that she provided for us. Okay. So do you want to leave it up to Jessica?
I'm happy to. The first thing that I have on here, we had discussed it briefly earlier this year about protection. So with the change from enrollment to average daily attendance, that changed how our support units are valued. With so many schools, falling in, with so many schools qualifying for protection, it actually came in at a higher rate than is traditionally seen. So looking at this chart, our midterm support units for FY23 based on enrollment were 240.08. Our midterm support units as of right now are 220.19 based on average daily attendance.
So this is... Sorry, I don't...
Where are my document right?
Mm-hmm. I'm trying to follow. So FY23 was 240?
Yes.
And midterm?
FY24 is 220.19. One's based on enrollment, the other's based on average daily attendance.
Okay.
That shift back to average daily attendance this year. Because the state recognizes that it is a shift and just generally, in general, if your midterm support units are less than 97% of your prior year's midterm support units, you are able to use the 97% of the prior year for this year. In order to do so, you pay protection on that. So 97% of last year's support units is that 232.78. So we would use that number for this year's midterm support units. To pay for protection this year, it's 4.42%. Typically, it's around 1% to 2%, but because there are so many school districts qualifying for protection this year, that's where the 4.42 came in. So 4.42% of the midterm support units at 97% of last year is 10.28 units. To bring us to our midterm support minutes now of 222.5. So that is what our February payment is going to be based on, is that 222.5. We had originally budgeted our midterm support units for this year at 225. So we're only short 2.5, which is great because if we would have been based on the 220.19, we would have been closer to down around 13 from where we had initially budgeted. I'm gonna skip ahead, I apologize, kind of put these out of order, but on page two, you can see how that plays out. Our salary-based apportionment with benefits is based on our midterm support units. So we know 225 down to 222.5, we're down 2.5 units. That's going to equate to roughly a shortfall in our salary-based apportionment of $215,000. Discretionary funding, which is technically operational funding. The state's working hard to change that terminology instead of calling it discretionary, calling it operational. That is based on our best 28 weeks. We typically budget that less. So we budgeted our best 28 weeks to be 221 units instead of the 225. So as long as we come in around 221 or above, we shouldn't have any shortfall in our discretionary funding. If it comes in less than that, then we could see a shortfall there. I'm feeling optimistic because we are right around 220.19 for our midterm support units. So that's pretty, we're pretty close to the 221. So I'm hoping that we'll stay there for the best 28 weeks. We haven't hit 28 weeks in the year, so it's hard to kind of estimate what that number's gonna be. But we did estimate it to be lower, which is great. So to kind of take that back a step, if we go back to page one. The state allows us to, through Idaho code, they break our, what, they multiply the support units by into four categories. So you have your administrative staff, which are your principals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, federal programs director. Those all fall under athletic directors. They follow their administrators. They allow in Idaho code, .075 of our unit for administrators. So if you look at that, we have 222.5 support units multiplied by the administrators. That gives us 16.6875. So they're essentially giving us 16.68 FTE for administrators. We have 21, so there's a difference of 4.3 administrators there. Again, this is all based on our midterm support units. Each category has a ratio associated with it. And you can see the differences between what the state gives us or allocates towards us, towards it, and what our actuals are. I do want to point out that the salary-based apportionment, there's some misnomers about it. It's not a reimbursement model. It's not meant to be a one-for-one. It's not, you can't pick and choose an employee. It basically takes the averages of all of our employees. So if you look at our certificated instructional staff, it would say these employees fall on this place in the career ladder, these ones have eight. We fit them into this giant spreadsheet based on FTE and where they place on the career ladder and whether they have MAs or BAs. And then it basically tells us what our average salary is. And then that takes it and multiplies it based on the support units and what the state's going to give us for those support units. So it's not meant to be based on, it doesn't fund us on actual FTEs or on individual staff members. It's basically an average of all staff and admin placement multiplied across our support units. If that helps. So like I said, we complete the salary-based apportionment spreadsheet. We factor in the protection costs. And I'm gonna skip to... I apologize, I should have put these in the order. Page four. If you go to page four, you can see for the general fund, we had budgeted $29 million, $29.5 million for salaries, $11 million for benefits. Our forecasted expenditures based on every assignment that's currently in our Skyward year sheet were estimated to be at $29.9 for salaries and $11.3 million for benefits. So we're over in the general fund. However, I want to point out that there's a couple of transfers that we still have to make. I know that we will get more literacy funding. We've only moved about $466,000 for literacy funding. We have a little over a million. So we will move about $600,000 more out of the general fund to literacy funding for salaries and benefits. We also haven't done the Medicaid transfers for salary benefits yet, so that will move another around $350,000 out of the general fund. We also factor in our protection adjustment, that $215,000, that brings us to the $734,000. And then you factor in our general fund difference, and that gets us essentially to $300,000 under budget.
The general fund difference of 414, can you talk about what that is?
So essentially that is the general fund budget minus the forecasted expenditures gives us our, where we're over or under, and we're over budget currently without these transfers.
So this says proposed budget?
It meant, I, that's an error.
Adopted budget?
It's adopted budget. Approved budget, I meant, I told you.
We were talking about it. She said, "Oh, I've gotta fix that."
So that is...
Adopted 24 budget?
Yes, adopted 2024 budget, so...
But I, but just so that we're fully remembering that, so that under, $319,000 under budget doesn't take into account the fact that we budgeted to...
Into general fund.
Into general fund, $700,000.
We budgeted...
That was part of Brian's budget last year that the board adopted was to use $700,000, $750,000 of general fund per fund balance to balance the budget.
So if all things stayed the same, then we would only be using 400, roughly 400 of that?
Probably, give or take, yes, depending on where we end up with discretionary funding. I do want to also point out this paper that we received from the state legislature because it does, or from the State Department of Education, so it does have some good information that's played into this as well that actually could be a great benefit to the district this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. There's a couple of things I really want to point out on it. The state's working to consolidate Tim Waters and Nice Public School funding. That's been in the conversation. Superintendent Critchfield works really hard to work with committee to look at the funding formula and what we can do to help with school districts and their funding. So they're working to consolidate the K-12 budget into three budgets aligned with the state's constitutional obligations and to also support local control. So the back of that handout will show you how they're kind of mapping to drop things into three buckets instead of having multiple different buckets. So it gives us more flexibility on how we use the funds.
So I just want to add to that a little bit. One of the things that she's trying to clarify for the legislators is when they do public schools allocation, it's a very large number, but not all of that money goes to schools because the State Department takes its cut right off at the top. There's money that goes to the ISAT vendor that we don't ever see. So they have taken all of those dollars that don't come directly to public schools out and they're not in these three buckets because the legislators are wanting to see how much money actually is going to our schools.
That includes advanced opportunities, Idaho Digital Learning Academy, anything that they pay for at the state level for assessments. So they're pulling that out so it gives a really good, clear picture to our legislation of what we're actually doing here. So when they consolidate, then one of the things that they're also doing is doing a weighted per student funding. So it's a base amount of funding per student plus additional amounts for special education, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged students. So this is additional funding to the district. One of the things that we talked about when we met with the legislators earlier this year is that special education funding is sometimes an unfunded mandate. And they're actually allocating with this weighted per student average $1,900
On top of the $1,000 base, so $2,900 per special ed student.
To give us that additional funding. So that is going to be roughly, very conservative, a $1.4 to $1.7 million increase on top of what we already get. And that's going to be put into our, I hate calling it discretionary because it's operational. It's operational funding. So we, if that is approved by the legislature, we should be able to see that in our budget next year and our revenues. The other thing is...
Can I speak to that? So that $1.4 million that would come to us, when, if you remember back to November of '22, yeah, '22, when Idaho voters approved the $330 million additional dollars to come to public schools, when they made the shift from enrollment to ADA, there was $161 million, or 61 million, I can't remember. There's a lot. I think it's 161.
161.
That we didn't get because of the change in funding. And Idaho voters approved that, and so Superintendent Critchfield has worked really hard at the legislative level to convince legislators that we owe it to the people of Idaho to do what they voted for us to do. And they're not willing to change back to enrollment funding. And so it sounds like there's a very good chance that we're gonna get that $1.4 million as additional discretionary money this year. And then, and the one time, but then it, but then it will become part of this per pupil moving forward.
Yes.
So that's where that money is coming from.
So it's a one-time allocation this year. From all, from everything, it sounds like it should move forward. I don't want to count or check and spell for their action.
Before JFAK has it's funded.
Once JFAK has approved it, in theory, we could potentially get that $1.4 this year, which would definitely offset our eat into the general fund by getting that additional operational funding. But it also is built into that formula going forward for future years, which is exciting to help offset the expenses.
So before we go any further, she's giving you lots of information. Do you have any questions about any, any part of this?
Yes, I do. Can you give me the statute for the protection? And what do you actually mean protection? Because I know it's not called protection.
It is called protection.
What is it? Okay, so what is the statute? I thought it was an emergency something or other.
No, it's, it's the hold harmless protection. We can look up the statute number, but basically what the state has done is that there's a pool of money that districts pay into. It's like self-insurance, basically. So that, because we have to build a budget and have it published and approved into the state before the kids actually show up the next year, we build it based on what we know to be true today. So this, in statute, this allows us to build our budget that way. And that if our enrollment is less than 97% of what we actually budgeted for, they hold us harmless at that 97%. But because every district is below 97% this year across the state because of the change from enrollment to ADA, we all are paying four times as much money into our self-insurance, our protection, to hold everybody harmless at the 97%. So that's why there's a, there's a bigger cost to us to do it. But I can look up the statute while we're talking about it.
So Jessica, something that I've noticed. So we have the, on the front page, we've got actual FTEs broken out amongst the four different categories.
Yes.
And we have a total of 619. But then when you go to page, whatever page this is, the third page, our FTEs show $663. Why is there such a variance between the two?
Transportation, I didn't include them in there because they're kind of their own beast. We get funding, 85% of funding for transportation through the transportation line item. So that's part of why they're not in there. I wasn't sure quite how to reflect the fact that we do get separate funding for them within the salary-based apportionment graphic. So the 663 minus the 44 is the 619.
So give us the bottom line, Jessica. What is our shortfall gonna be at the end of the year?
That, a great question. If we receive the additional funding from the state, we won't have a shortfall. We will not eat into fund balance. If we don't receive that, we're still estimated to eat into fund balance, just not as much as we previously thought. So we'll still be at the $758,000 that we have as approved in our budget. Hoping we get all of our property tax revenues and everything. But we should be pretty on par with where we budgeted. And I will have to say, there's a lot of work that went into ensuring that we stayed within that range. There was a lot of hard work at the start of the summer to look at, do we need to staff that? Do we, can we hold, can we be in on all these expenditures to try to make sure that we didn't eat into that as much as we had planned to?
Okay, so base, I guess I just kind of dig into what I thought I heard you say earlier. If you go to page 34. So being under the 319, 261, which is an advantage, but that's still...
Eating into the balance.
Into the sum.
Yeah, and it actually offsets the sum, it offsets the $750.
So that's only around...
So it's less.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm hedging a little bit just because I'm not 100% sure on some of the revenues. If we come in less on our best 28 weeks than 221, we will lose revenue there.
Okay, but so, so then your statement that, you know, we're not going to be short is not accurate because we actually are eating into the fund balance because we already budgeted to do that.
Right, it was an approved budget expenditure.
Okay, okay. So we're still coming within budget?
Right.
Because that $750 was budgeted.
But if the state gives us that additional allocation...
Then that will be an issue.
Right, right.
And that can go back into the general fund. The fund balance.
Ramona, that's subsection five in that statute.
Thanks.
Which statute?
It is, it is...
331009?
Yep, subsection five.
I was close, I was kidding.
I just opened that one.
Thanks, Brooke.
If you would have asked where the staff ratios came from, Ramona, I have that one ready for you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I basically understand all this. This is not the questions I had, so I'll have to figure it out, yes.
What questions can I prepare for you?
I'll figure it out. I mean, I've asked them over and over. How did we get here? I want to see the information that you saw that led you to know that the protection was coming about, that the budget was short, that this was overspent. I have yet to see that information. I want to see the same information you saw to understand that the district was in this protection status.
So we received notification from the state. I can forward that email to the board. But it, it's, it's just a calculation based on our support units. It really truly is what it boils down to is we know with the change from enrollment to average daily attendance that we fell into protection because we were less than 97% of what we were last year. So automatically, we fall into protection for that.
Right, okay, so I guess there's just a lot of different things all going together than I guess is what this is because of, you know, what we've been heard. I guess there's multiple things, you know, the four and a half million, the protection, the change in the units, which I get all that, but I just feel like I'm missing pieces, but that's fine.
So going to page one. We're only funded for 83 classified staff, but we have 309?
Both are equivalent, yes.
And we're only funded for 17. What's, what's, what is pupil services staff as opposed to classified staff?
On page two, and I missed three from there. Pupil services, you have your nurses, your school, your colleges, your counselors, and then am I missing us?
Us.
Us. Us. So that would be the other three equivalent to make it 27 for pupil services. So that's where those come from.
Okay. Instructural staff is strictly teachers?
Yes.
Okay. And the classified staff are?
So if you look at anybody who does uphold a teaching credential. So I would fall into that. Anyone actually on the finance team falls into classified.
Brooke is a classified.
Brooke's classified. For best.
And then all of your parents.
That's why I'm trying to figure out.
Our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our grounds crew, our bus drivers.
Administra, administrative assistants in the office.
Department directors.
Yep. Any of our para, most of our, all of our paras fall into that. This includes crossing guards and every new newbies, every position that we have. We take all of their percentage of hours worked and combine them to create the FTEs.
So the only people that are certified are administrators, your teachers, your pupil services personnel, and then everybody else is a classified.
Okay, but we don't know that was part of the breakdowns.
It's on page two. So we do have some of it broken out. I wasn't, I can go more in-depth on the classified. So you have your classified hourly, your classified salary, and then your sped hourly and your armed guards and your transportation. That would all fall into that classified category.
Okay. And then the stipend amounts. What is, because, okay, so I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume anything. Athletic directors stipend, that's what we're paying in addition to the athletic director position?
No.
No, those are for middle school only athletic directors. They're actually teachers, but then they also do the athletic director duties on top of that.
Okay. But we also have stipend certified, stipend classified, stipend CL is coaching, stipend CL is extracurricular, stipend cert extracurriculars, stipend cert dual, so I mean...
And dual, we do get reimbursement from MFT.
That's dual enrollment.
Dual credit.
Oh, okay.
That's certified.
Not dual enrollment.
Certified coaching is a teacher that coaches.
And then classified.
And a classified is a classified coach.
Yep.
Okay, good. I do understand that. However, unfortunately, we don't have any numbers. We just have dollar amounts. So like, how many of these positions do we have?
Because they don't count towards FTE. Stipends don't count towards the full-time equivalent.
Okay, but we're paying them.
But we pay for it.
So we should know how many we have that we're paying. And that's why Brooke sent us that big, huge staffing list to look through to see, to see how many of each different kind of staff we have. Who's being paid for what, who's, who's titled under what job duties.
But what you, what I think you're saying, Michelle, is it would be really easy and clean if all of those numbers were transferred here so we could just look at it and what we have.
The tricky thing is then you're double counting people. That's why I didn't do it that way because you potentially have a teacher that might have an AP stipend and they might have the MA and then they might be coaching and they might get the dual credit piece and then you would count them for extra times. And so that's why I didn't put an FTE with stipends because it would overstate and be...
But if we're not, if we're not counting the FTEs on here, because you've already kind of told us on that other one, then I think that she's just looking at...
We can tell you the number of people, but I just want to make sure we don't correlate that to FTE because...
Yeah, we just take that, take that off.
It, you could count somebody multiple times and that would overinflate our numbers.
But if, so if we change that title of that column from FTE to just number, then we're not calculating FTE anymore. We're literally just telling the board we have 85 teachers who are getting AP stipends. We have two middle school athletic directors who are getting stipends.
I can add another column because it gets really tricky even with classified because even though we say we have 117 FTE, that could very well be 134 just based on assignments because a lot of those assignments are not 100% full-time.
They're not eight-hour.
They're not eight-hour assignments. So I would, I would say we could do the FTE and add, add a number for the number of people in that category just knowing that that could be duplicated.
Right. And also keep in mind too, when you're talking about coaching, we... Right. And also keep in mind too, uh, when you're talking about coaching, we have a, what we call street coaches, that they're paid by the season. And so we have coaches that are not on books quite yet for like spring sports and stuff. So, um, those aren't calculated like on my staffing sheet that I've presented to you guys. I, I had mentioned that we had some that needed to be calculated.
We can have that column, Michelle, just so you can have a more clear picture.
Okay.
And I think the other thing too, to remember, like the masters, the bachelors, the AEP, the dual, all that, I mean, even though it is a quote stipend, it's still a statutory thing. So it's not like we can say, oh, we're not going to pay you that.
Right.
The dual credit isn't statutory. That's in our negotiated agreement. That's the money from NIC that we're paying our teachers to teach.
So is this the same as the, um?
You're thinking maybe advanced opportunities, but.
Yeah, maybe I am. And what is the one, where, is this the one that, um, the counselor signs up, they get a portion, seventy-thirty thing or whatever? Okay.
That's it, yep. Yeah, those are flows through dollars. Those aren't, those are dollars from the institutions for the dual credit program.
Right, okay.
Currently, they go to the teachers and the counselors.
The other piece of this is some of this is, there's, we get money from the state directly for it, so it's not out of general funds. That's another piece, so.
And not part of SBA.
So I'm only showing general fund. Um, we're on track in all the other funds for what we budgeted. Um, but I'm only showing general fund because that is eighty-nine, I mean, the salaries and benefits of our general fund are eighty-nine percent of our budget. So it's a significant portion of the conversation for next fiscal year.
Okay, so I am just curious, why on your little spreadsheet here on page one, the actual FTE is total six nineteen, why were the forty-four transportation not included over there under actual?
Um, because the transportation, we do get an eighty-five percent reimbursement on them. Um, so I was having some difficulty. I, we can add them in there. It's just knowing that we do get an eighty-five percent reimbursement on transportation employees.
Okay, but you have them back here. That's why I was like, wait a minute.
So if you take the six nineteen plus the forty-four, that gets you to the six sixty-three, but that transportation, because they do, we do get reimbursement for them outside of the SBA.
Additional dollars.
That's a tricky, fun little.
And you said it's a monthly eighty-five percent?
It's eighty-five percent of what we spent last year.
Yes, I think that's a caveat.
Is how they fund transportation.
Only through your mind.
Yeah.
Ramona, what questions did you have? I, I just want to make sure that we're not coming back to a situation where you're frustrated because you've asked and asked and asked and haven't gotten answers. I, I don't want that being an issue anymore.
What tonight was going to be is we were going to get all those answers. That's, they, in my brain, that was the intention of tonight. I mean, all this is great information too. I mean, don't get me wrong. This is awesome. Um, but I thought we were finally going to get to the bottom of how we ended up here kind of thing, you know? Um, so I'll try and articulate it better in an email or something. I, I don't know what else to do. I've asked in many different ways, you know?
Are you speaking to the fund balance?
All of it, yeah. The fund balance, the protection, you know, what is the four point four-two percent of what? You know, I mean, all those, everything you guys know, the board did it. Like, I never saw anything from anybody. You know, we just got bits and pieces. So I'm trying to, you know, if I answer questions, you know, people are asking, I need to be able to articulate it better than I am now. And I just keep saying, oh yeah, we're going to have a meeting. Oh yeah, we're going to have a meeting. I just don't know what, I mean, I don't know how else to ask, even when to ask.
I can share with you this, the, the spreadsheet from the state that we received on protection. Um, like I said, it's a typical part of the S, the support unit SBA process. It, it's, it's something that's been in existence. Um, they calculate the four point four-two based on the midterm support unit adjustment for basically all the lost units. Um, I'd be happy to share that information with the board. Um, that is for this current year. As far as last year, again, the biggest issue was that when the budget was built, that transfer for the facility, the board-approved facility projects wasn't taken into account for the general fund, um, fund balance. And so that was a huge chunk of it. And then the other piece truly was, we had overspending in our facilities budget for maintenance and operation of our facilities because we did not have a plant facility levy. And then we also had excess expenditures in our special education.
So do we have, I think she just wants to see the, the data. So do we have something?
Part of our audit.
Yeah, so can we pull at the next meeting, because we're going to have to have another meeting, if we're going to work together to figure out how we're going to build this budget. We can bring the pieces from the audit that show where the overspending happened.
Yeah, I, I have all that. I wanted, I asked for a comparative of five years because all of a sudden, we overspent in a category that we have never even spent close to the budget in. So I'm trying to figure out where, where did that happen and why did that happen?
Do you want it for all funds or just the general funds?
The, the ones that we over, that we overspent in, it was, yeah, it was, uh.
I think she was looking at what have we spent in special education in particular? I think is what she's looking to over the last five years and compared to budget, right?
What I'm imagining is that we could do, um, similar to the monthly report that I give you on the general fund by the program category, I can give you the actuals versus our this year's bud- budget, or do you want budget and actual for each year? And just just see the year-over-year difference?
Yeah.
That's what I would like to hear.
Very easily.
For five years.
Very easily do that for you, no problem.
So we'll bring those.
And it doesn't have to be an ongoing thing. I'm just trying to put this thing to bed, and I feel like it hasn't been. I have to talk to laymen. You know, I represent laymen. I don't represent all you people, right? Unless you're in my zone. But what I'm saying is, I don't talk your lingo to them, and they don't talk your lingo to me. So I have to be able to explain to them in everyday Joe Blow terms.
I try to do the same.
Here's our checkbook kind of thing, you know? Um, and then how did we get there? What does that mean? Like, did the state just automatically say, oh, you're in protection? Or did we say, oh crap, we need protection? I mean, I don't know how that all happened or what happened.
And a big part of this conversation too is across the state, enrollment is down. We are down in enrollment in our district across the state. We are seeing decreased enrollment.
Well, that's nationwide. Everybody's that way. The enrollment's down, they can't get teachers. I mean, people are hiring people to teach that don't even have degrees.
Yeah, um, protection happens automatically at the state level, and they just tell us what it is.
If you qualify.
If you qualify.
And we typically do, huh?
No, it's, like you said, it's unpressed.
That's an important piece to remember.
No, I do, that's why I keep asking the same questions for months, because no, I under, I do, and that's why, I mean, and that's just how I work. I would put on the brakes, and I have to fully understand why so that we don't do it again, or so that I, we can recognize if that thing is coming again. But if it was never identified to me, I have no way to recognize it, you know?
Well, protection's been off the table for the last three years because we've been enrollment-based funding. So there hasn't been a need for.
It's higher than it was.
For protection, but now we're back to ADA.
ESR dollars, that helps support a lot of operations.
Right, but just as, as, as a state, we haven't really had to use the protection because of the enrollment, so.
Well, then we had COVID, and I mean, and the last few years was not normal.
Exactly, exactly.
So essentially, you, you, you make one calculation to figure out whether or not you qualify, right?
So out of the hundred and sixteen school districts that are not charter schools, only eighteen did not qualify for protection this year.
Yeah, but to determine whether or not you qualify.
You use last year's support units multiplied by ninety-seven percent. If your current support units are less than that, you qualify.
Okay, and that's statute-based.
Yes, it's.
So that's the qualifier.
Yep, then that's what I, yep, okay.
And then assuming you qualify.
Then you pay for the protection.
And the state does it automatically, or we do the calculation?
They do it automatically, and they adjust our salary-based apportionment accordingly.
Yeah, okay. So we, so we submitted numbers to them at one point, and then when, at what point do they say, oh, maybe we should run numbers and see if Lakeland needs to be in protection? I mean.
They run it based off our November IC reporting data.
Okay.
So based on that November submission is when they look at it. So that's at the end of December, we kind of got some finalized. This is where we expect you to fall for protection.
Right, okay.
So our first ten weeks of school are, generate about seventy-five percent of our fund, overall funding. Um, so attendance in the first ten weeks is critical. So as we're building calendars, the state constantly reminds us, if you know there's a date in the first ten weeks of school where you have poor attendance, do not have school on that date. And I feel like we've done a pretty good job of that, but we always see a drop on October tenth.
Funteen season starts.
Yep. Um, and, um, so if we want to maximize our average daily attendance while we're looking at building our calendar, we probably should be pulling our average daily attendance on October tenth to see how big of a dip do we take on that day? Because if it's a day where our kids aren't in session, we should be not having school that day and adding that day somewhere else. That's what the, that's what the state would recommend to us, to generate the mu- the most ADA that we can.
Yep. Yep, I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly, yeah.
And then the best twenty-eight weeks is where they really focus on the operational. So that's when they look at, okay, really truly toward the end of the year, we can see your best twenty-eight weeks, and they kind of screw up that number for the operational. Um, that number is typically always lower than our midterm support unit number, which is why we budgeted at two twenty-one instead of two twenty-five.
Um, the report that we submit in November, you called it by an acronym, what is it?
I C, it's the Idaho State. Brooke probably knows about the proper.
What is the acronym you called it again?
I C.
I S E E.
And that's.
Oh, I S, Sam Edward Edward.
That's our whole state reporting system, and generates our whole entire everything as far as funding.
Okay. So that's where the trigger happened.
Yeah, did we clarify that to help you?
That, oh yeah, that, I'm getting somewhere.
It's the Idaho, it's the Idaho System for Educational Excellence. And so we basically report all the attendance through there. Brooke gets to report every single employee through there.
And their certificate.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it, it's all of us coming together who work in different, it's finance, it's student sides, human resources, and then they upload the whole thing. It's, it's just a lot of fun.
I upload those here, of course, you can get them from the state. Um, in fact, some of them they have on their website you can download. So that, and I think it was just, I'm trying to find out where all these things collided. So that's one issue, because our support units were off. And the other issue being the overspending, the eight hundred thousand not being allocated, the, those are all the numbers I'm trying to put in their little bucket on a single piece of paper, so to speak. So I have, you know, answers to all those questions.
So when we come back together, um, Jessica will bring the five-year budget to act, five years of budget to actuals, year over year, um, for special education. Um, and then also on that sheet, we can show what was budgeted for facilities last year and what was actually spent, uh, for the maintenance of facilities last year, so that you can see budget to actual for that, um, because that's where the, that's where the biggest discrepancies were.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, and you might have given us this, I'm trying to remember if I saw it or not, um, was the full accounting of all the ESR funds and where they were spent, those three different, um, did you give us that?
Oh, I don't think we've ever seen that. I think.
Yeah.
I am finalizing our reports to the state on that, so as soon as I have that done, I can give it to you as well. So.
Perfect. Here's a little bit of information we're learning. Jessica had to actually, um, ask for an extension, because it's due on Friday. But when, um, when, uh, for ESR three dollars, um, initially, we were told by the state that we didn't have to do time and effort. So if you're using, if you're getting paid out of federal funds, so let's just talk about Title I. If we weren't fully funding our title people out of our title program, and we were using general fund dollars, they would have to, um, submit a time and effort sheet quarterly that showed that if they're fifty percent title-funded and fifty percent general fund-funded, they had to have a sheet that documented that fifty percent of their time was spent in title.
Actually, any employee that is paid with federal.
Well, I know, I, I know. I'm just using title as an example. So ESR dollars are federal funds. So initially, the state, we asked the question, do we have to do time and effort with ESR dollars? Because we, we, we should, we paid half of a teacher's salary with ESR, and then the other half with general fund. Um, and the state said no. And then they came back and they said, actually, these are federal dollars, and you do have to do time and effort. And, um, Brian never shared that with any of us and didn't do it. So the state's asking for documentation of time and effort. We don't have that documentation. So Jessica has been in conversation with them about how do you want us to present this? We can go back, because we know who we paid, and we know what percentage we paid. We can go back and create that document.
It'll be dated today's date, though.
Right. Uh, but we, I, she said, I don't know what to do, Lisa. And I said, well, we're not going to lie. We're going to tell them the truth.
Right.
Um, and then we'll just find out what the remedy is for that. So just so you know, she's working diligently on that report, but we're dealing with that.
We've had two different audits. I were, actually have three different audits going on right now. The state, um, due January fifth was all of the ESR expenses from the beginning of ESR forward. We had to provide documentation for everything related to that. What's due right now, which is what we got the extension on, was any of the ESR expenditures that were done last fiscal year. So we're working on finalizing that report, because you have to break it out in all their fund categories. Lynn has probably enjoyed my emails on these ones. Um, and then we also are going through our title audit as well. So we have three different audits that are all federal happening right now. And we just finished our pupil service one. That one came, and we're done with that.
So once she finalizes her reporting for the, this, the federal government and the state, we'll be able to provide that report to the board.
Yep. Well, I'm sorry, you got all of this dumped on you.
You know, it's a great learning thing, because I live here for most of the spending on this, so it's been a fun puzzle to, to work through, um, and categorize it. So it's been, it's been interesting.
And just had to do a little scavenger hunting, find the information.
We have great attitude towards.
The smile on our faces. A little scary.
It's called baptism by fire.
Like slightly sadistic.
I learned a lot, you learned a lot, because I didn't have to go back and dig. So.
Mm, yep.
Just, I wish I had a little bit more time.
Right, yeah, yeah. So ESR, so there's two different ESR, um, audits, and then the title audit.
Correct.
One was due in January, and one's due this Friday, you said? So we got an extension.
Yeah, the state's working with us, yeah.
The, and the state is the one conducting all three of the audits. So they're doing ESR from the beginning of time, ESR for the last year, and then, um, title.
And title is an annual review that happens every year, but this year, um, every, every so often, you get selected as the school that they're going to come do either a site visit or do a, they don't call it a.
It's a desk audit.
Like a desk audit. And so right now, we're doing the desk audit. So we were chosen this year, so.
I will say, a site visit would be preferable, because then you can just give them the documentation with the.
And then you can talk through it.
Desk audit, you have to upload everything. And it does take a lot of time. Um, Norma's been working so diligently on that.
So just all happened, it all happened to fall in the month of January and February. Fun times.
And we're not doing, you know, W two, W nine, so there's, there's, you know, all the fun things in January.
Yep, it's been fun. So one of the, one of the things that, um, I did ask Jessica to put on, and we haven't talked about yet, but, um, our, our supplemental levy is nine point five two million dollars of our overall general fund budget. And when we first ran the bigger amount in twenty seventeen, I think, when Becky went from the five point three up to the eight point nine, um, there were programs that we, we highlighted for parents that we were going to use the money to pay for. So those are, that on that page three, um, where she has other programs. So she's got the principal assistance. So she's got the principal assistants, the advanced learning program, and, um, our, our armed district safety specialists um, are there, uh, because as we start to build the budget, pardon the conversation, from the board's perspective, I guess, I feel like at least the conversation needs to be had. What do we want to do about our supplemental levy? Do we want to try to scale it back? And if so, where do we pair things off? Do we want to go back out to our community at the same amount? And if so, where, what do we pair off? Because the cost of everything is getting greater. So we just wanted you to be aware that there were some, uh, these are certified programs. The other, uh, classified programs that are, that we didn't put on here, um, are, uh, we had a behavior intervention coach at the elementary level to help, because, um, at recess time, what we were noticing was classroom teachers are outside for regular recesses. And then we have noon duties outside who are not certified teachers for lunch duty. And nobody was doing things the same way, so it was creating kind of a lot of gray for kids. Like, okay, well, when Ms. Arnold comes outside for recess, she lets us climb on the snow hill. But when the noon duties come out, we're not allowed to be on the snow hill. And so that makes it super hard for kids to know what they can and cannot do. So we put these behavior, uh, intervention coaches in place and they kind of oversaw all of the recesses to make sure that we were being really consistent for kids and that kids clearly understood what the expectations were, so that they could be safe when they were playing. Um, that was part of the, the levy. I don't know that we still have a behavior intervention coach at every elementary school. Um, but we, I think. Um, and then we also added, um, la- lab techs, um, at every elementary school so that, and because, um, prior to Becky coming, our elementary people only had three thirty-five minute prep times in the course of a week, and we wanted to at least give them one prep per day, like a, a secondary person has. Obviously, they're not getting an hour prep like the secondary people do, but, um, and in order to do that, we had to create classes that kids could be attending. So we, um, we put the building lab techs in, so they're teaching kids how to use Google Sheets and Google Docs and Google Slideshow and creating pamphlets and brochures and, um, so those positions were included on the levy. And then the other thing that we added was, um, we call them P S Cs, so Program Support Coordinators. Because we were struggling so much to get, um, and we still are, special education teachers. And our teachers, um, were having, um, to spend long hours after work because their caseloads were so high on I E Ps, so we hired classified people to help them with some of the paperwork load and we call them P S Cs. So those people also still exist and those are levy funded, so.
On the last page of the, the handout, I'm gonna go through where we're at with general fund this year and it breaks it up by the percent of revenue. So our state, state portion, we have seventy percent of our general fund revenues. Our local revenue, which is our supplemental levy, um, the T O R T levy, which is a small amount, and then any interest earned on investments. That's twenty-three percent of our, our general fund revenues. Um, the state categorical, six percent, and then federal funding is about one percent.
That's the E rate, that's not, that's not, cause the part, uh, I D E A, part B is in.
It all runs in it all, it's all.
And title is in it all, but this is E rate.
Um, and then if you look at our expenditures, like your salaries and benefits are roughly eighty-nine percent of our expenditures within the general fund. Um, your purchase services, supplies and materials and other items are the remaining eleven percent. So we, like any school district, are top heavy in personnel. Um, so do make any changes to the supplemental levy that has a direct impact on our staff.
You're talking about the supplemental levy that we would run again this year.
Yes.
Not the.
Not the current.
The one for coming here is gonna, is already set, obviously.
Just thinking about setting our, starting to set our budgets. If, I know we've talked about trying to scale back on that, and if we're gonna do that, then that needs to be reflected in how we write the budget. The other piece that isn't in our budget right now, but that is part of the supplemental levy, is curriculum dollars. And we've been lucky, because we've had the S R dollars to use in lieu of that, but we don't have those anymore. And so we, we do have to be intentional about budgeting some curriculum money.
Are we gonna have any discussion about staffing?
Well, that's, that's why we presented this and for, tonight was, uh, our intention was to just give the board information that will help us kinda guide our conversations, which is why we gave you that on that first page, you can see. Um, it was important to me that you could see kind of the discrepancy between what the state funds and what we actually have. That recognizing that the state is funding us based on about ninety-four percent of our actual enrollment, but our actual enrollment still shows up every day. So it's hard to say we're gonna be a hundred percent in line with, with the state's funding, because they're not fully funding our kids.
Right. But if we look, you know, I've taken enough time to look at the elementary level. I haven't looked quite as much secondary level, but frankly, we're overstaffed at the elementary level.
How do we determine how many pairs we have in a school, or how many teachers, or how many?
So, uh, so teachers is easy. Let's start with the easy first. Um, we, uh, the board has set the target. Uh, our target classroom size for K three is twenty. And that is significantly lower than what we used to have. So, um, that requires more teachers, because it, we used to say, um, at third grade, we were okay with twenty-six to twenty-eight. And now we're saying we really wanna keep it at twenty. So if you have, you know, three classrooms of twenty and you've got sixty kids, you could have, I mean, it's really pushing it, but you have three, two classrooms of thirty, third graders, which would be challenging. That would, in my mind, be too many. Um, this is where the small neighborhood schools also start to have a little bit of an impact on our budget, because if we had larger schools and you had, you know, uh, a population at second grade of, let's just say, um, a hundred and fifty, and we wanted twenty-five kids in each classroom, we would need seven or six teachers. Right? But if we have a hundred and fifty second graders spread out over three schools, you, we can't have a class, we can't have a, um, first grade classroom of twenty-eight kids. So instead of one twenty-eight kid classroom, we have two fourteen kid classrooms, and, which is very low. But that's the, that's the.
Dilemma.
Dilemma with small neighborhood schools. That's, that's why you save money when you have larger schools.
And to, to help with that, help, that's a qualifier. Um, you know, that's where we've done some, you know, K one loops, or we've done some, you know,
Combo classes.
Classes that, I mean, are not ideal, and there isn't a teacher that will tell you that those are great. But we've done them in education forever. It's really hard as an instructional, um, teacher. So, but in order not to have those kinds of class sizes, we have done that. Um, so, and, you know, some teachers do it great and knock it out of the park and others really struggle. It's not easy. It's way harder.
So where, where, I'm interested to know, when you say that we're overstaffed at elementary, because when I look at class sizes in elementary, we don't have, we don't have exceptionally small classes.
I'll bring my worksheet in.
So I'm just wondering if you're looking at total staff, because you've got.
No, I looked at it school by school.
Classroom by classroom?
Classroom by classroom.
Okay. Yeah, I would be interested to, to see what you're, what you're seeing and like how far over you think we are. We definitely, Twin Lakes Elementary this year is, has much smaller class sizes than they had prior, but we moved kids out of their, their school. And what we ended up with is we either have one class of twenty-nine kindergarteners and a class of fifteen and a class of fourteen. And so we opted for the fourteen and fifteen, because that's where learning's gonna happen.
I actually took the, uh, what, your peak in Roma, which was back in September sometime, I think, moved that forward to next year. You know, toward progression, and then looked at class sizes, school by school.
And we typically do that in March to see, and that's where we, that's what we did last year when we knew we were, when we realized that we were gonna eat seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the fund balance. We just said, how can we minimize that impact? And so we did exactly what you're talking about and rolled those numbers over. And then, um, we, that's how we, I think we cut eight, eight teachers, um, just through attrition that we didn't fill, because we were able, we didn't need to. So that happens every year.
Right.
Um, and, yeah, and.
I think we're a little bit over at the middle school level too.
Uh, I would say Timberlake Middle School is definitely overstaffed for the number of kids that they have.
So that's fine, just, you know, as long, as long as we can take a look at it.
Oh, absolutely. The other thing that you had asked for, um, and I don't know that they've started to work on it yet, but you guys asked to look at the master schedules for the secondary, the, the kinda draft master schedules. Um, just to take a look at the, what class sizes they're anticipating for next year based on incoming freshmen and incoming sixth graders, so, um, that's also on my radar to bring. So you'll have that too.
Um, Bob, can you share that information that you have with the, with the rest of us?
Sure.
Spreadsheet or something?
You know, I don't, I don't have it with me, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that would be great. Um, the class size thing is set in Idappa.
Yep.
That's where that came from. So it wasn't necessarily that the, you know.
It's oh eight, oh two, oh two.
Yeah, and the state, yeah.
Kindergarten, twenty, grades one, two, and three, twenty, grades four, five, and six, twenty-six. Middle school, a hundred and sixty teacher load, high school, a hundred and sixty teacher load, and alternative is eighteen average daily class load.
So is that a, um, is that a, like a suggested number, um?
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Especially fourth grade, they recognize four through six statewide is really, that's where the large load is. Um, and they also have, um, and it's the same way, a lot of it, the same way sort of the state figures out, um, the ratio for how many counselors per how many students. I think it's one to five hundred. So, um, I forget if the state said that they were funding us, but if we had whatever, you know, whatever our student population is, you know.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, so, but I, I think that that's why it might look like we're overstaffed, because we used to have, we used to be okay with higher class sizes and now the goal is twenty to one in those primary grades, so.
The teachers love the small class sizes, just point it out.
But the, you know, but I, but the state's not really funding us. That's the, that's what's hard.
Right. They recommend that you target this number, but they're not gonna fund it.
Yeah, if they would fund at their target, you know, that would really.
Just like curriculum.
Right, the state.
You do it, but it's like.
The state claims a kindergarten teacher based on forty kids, because they still are funding a half-day kindergarten teacher on that full day.
Yeah, that's the other thing I was gonna say, so in that, I had to go back and look, because some of those things you mentioned, I do not remember being in Dr. Meyer's, uh, presentations that she used to do every year for the levy, and it was for funding full-day kindergarten, which we don't have to do.
Right.
Um, the other part the levy did was, um, well, it used to fund A L P and then they took that out. And it also, um, she also funded, uh, F F A, so the ag program, um.
Which is funded through C T E dollars now.
Yeah, so, and then, uh, athletic trainers, um, uniform replacements, um, extracurricular program and safety equipment. So a lot of it was a full-day kindergarten, a lot of sports stuff, um.
Did we have a, uh, armed district safety specialist on there back then?
No.
Well, that's right, cause that came up after two thousand eighteen.
Is there anything at the state level about school safety this year?
There, they will continue to run their grants, but their grants cannot be used for personnel. It's all hardware, um.
How many guns can you carry?
Hardware?
Apparently, that's gonna happen fairly soon.
Yeah, scary. Anyway, yeah, so they're not funding people. They're just funding things.
So that's, that's a dilemma for us to determine whether or not we're really gonna bite the bullet on that one or.
I would say, that, that's one of my highest priorities. I don't know where it lands for the board, but I just, we had the most trouble shifting kids to, to John Brown, because Twin Lakes Elementary and Garwood both have full-time S R Os and this school doesn't. And parents did not feel that their kids were as safe there. So there, there is a perception amongst our parents that our schools where we have people who are there all day long are.
Let's tell them a server has right next door with a six shooter.
Well, and we have an S R, yeah, well, we do have an S R O there, um, but it would be nice if we could get to the point where we have one at every school.
But how do you do that when it's not funded by the state? And it's zero, it's not even sped, which is supposed to be forty percent, when it's more like ten percent. I mean, how do you do that when there's no, no money coming?
Yeah, what is our budget and our funding for the preschool? That's the other thing that always gets left off of everything.
We have, do you have that somewhere though? It's on the monthly financials, but I can't edit it.
Okay.
It's a very small amount. It does not even come close to paying.
Yeah, I know, that's why I wanted to see.
From its inception has never been, across the nation, has never been funded, never.
When it, when it first started, it came into being, the federal government promised they would fund it at forty percent. They've never even come close to that.
Well, the, um, so the preschool, um, anyways, I don't know. I'll look at those numbers. I don't remember seeing them collectively.
Yeah, I think we get like twenty thousand-ish for the whole program, and we have two preschool teachers, full-time plus pairs. There's, it's not even close.
Yeah, that's the other thing that's frustrating, cause even if you go bigger classrooms, I, I feel like we would have to put more adults in there, because
Right.
All these, th- these students have behavior issues. There's no way you could put one adult.
Yeah, well, and if we're trying, I mean, I would just say, we're really trying to get back to focusing on academics and instruction.
Right.
Um, I mean, we need teachers focused on academics and instruction. And when you have such a diverse, um, scope of understanding as far as range within a, within a classroom of just a fifth grade classroom, a third grade classroom. I mean, even in our first grade classrooms, we have kids that are reading Harry Potter, and then we have non-readers that don't know their letters. So how is one teacher, when you get, when there's thirty kids, it's hard at twenty, but then you add thirty kids with no support? How do you give? And we just had a conversation about, um, you know, what happens is you teach to the middle. There's limited direct instruction, and so now you're just trying to like, it becomes busy work of here, let me give you this, and then you're asking the parents to help. You're not having authentic instruction, and so you're not teaching retention strategies. Kids can't, you know, there isn't any mnemonic pieces, they're not remembering. It's, I learned it once and then it's gone. They're not generalizing skills. I mean, from an instructional standpoint, we're not doing an effective job of teaching when you have such a diverse population with larger numbers. It's just, that's the reality. And that's it. There's no behaviors.
Right, yeah, they did it disservice, I think, when they came up with the great idea that we'll just, you know, include everybody. It's like, well, that doesn't give anybody any good, like the, for little kids that need extra help, can't get extra help. Those that are like, you know, I could do, you know, outrun sixth grader, whatever, geometry.
I could be teaching the math for you today.
Yeah, was that?
I could be teaching the math for you today.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's what happens sometimes.
Right.
And every kid, I mean, we have, we say this all the time, and all of our principals believe this, every kid should be challenged. Every single kid should get the help that they need, and it's our job to make sure every single kid is ed, being educated regardless. So if your starting place is here versus your starting place here, we have an obligation that every year, they're walking away with more information than they walked in with.
Well, and that's what keeps them engaged.
Right.
You know, if they're not challenged, there's no engagement, you know.
Yeah, if they're bored, they're gonna find something to do.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. And that's not what.
Typically the, yeah.
Exactly. And it's typically the ones that need to be engaged.
So Ramona, we have twenty thousand budgeted in the general fund for the preschool, and then we received twenty-four thousand, five hundred roughly, um, in I D A preschool funds, so it's fifty-two thousand between the two funds. So it's fifty-two thousand between the two funds.
Yeah, that I would consider that an unfunded benefit. I know they think it's funded, but like when, they have fifty-two or what, I mean?
All things spent, I mean, when you think about it, we could have a student coming in that needs a full-time nurse.
Right.
We are obligated to provide that.
Yep.
It's not a CNA, it's a full-time nurse.
Yep.
We have students with diabetes that are coming in that need full-time, you know, I mean, there, it, that stuff is not funded.
Fragile kids.
And so, um.
And when you say twenty thousand in the general fund and twenty-four thousand in IDEA preschool, we just budgeted twen, general fund dollars, there aren't dollars specifically in general fund for preschool. Or are there? From the state?
No, we just budgeted.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We budget the appropriation, we don't have the revenues to cover.
I just wanna make that really clear, cause it's.
Can I just tell you about discretionary spending?
Right, I just wanna get really clear, cause people are gonna watch this, that it sounds like she just said that we get forty-four thousand dollars for our program.
No, no.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure it's.
And that teacher cost, how much maybe?
The two teachers, the two, we had two teachers.
You know, I would still like to learn also how the district got from many, many years of two preschools and every elementary school having sped teachers to on, and down to just like getting rid of our, um, librarian, it all happened about the same time, you know?
Special ed, I would tell you, is just, we can't, we've had positions open that we, we can't hire. We're struggling to find the people and it's the one position that we're not allowed to get creative about. So every other position, you, you can hire someone off the street who might have a four-year degree in something, philosophy, and there's an alternate route to certification for them to become a teacher and we can hire them while they go through that. We can't do that with special educators.
Well, they can have just an associate's degree and we can hire them, but not special education.
But from a transparency.
Well, I would have to agree with the special education thing because I wouldn't want, if I was a parent of a special ed kid, I would not want just a regular teacher.
But how, how often are we putting paras that are, all they have to do is pass the practices?
Yeah.
How often are they, those kiddos learning from a para that doesn't even have an associate?
And the, and the reality is.
Well, I think with the paras, we'd be better off with professional development so that it could be, I don't even think that the quote college path would make them better. What would make them better is actually specialized training for what they're dealing with. And a lot of times there's a lot of free stuff, but you gotta convince the people to go do it, you know?
And we've provided a lot of opportunities for them to do exactly that.
And being a sped teacher, I would tell you that there was probably a span of two years. At this point, I was out of the classroom, but over a course of, I think it was roughly two years, there was definitely a push, it was presented in a way of, we want special ed, the specialized teacher, to be the one instructing. And so, um, we will, because we need quantity coverage, we will hire more classified staff to help with some of the paperwork and some of the other stuff, some of, so that the teacher could be
Right.
the person that kind of morphed into, from my perspective, and I was at the district office at this point, so I, I might be speaking a little bit out of turn, these, the girls can say differently, but it, from my appearance, it felt like, and then that turned into where, like when I was at Garwood, we had two special ed teachers the whole time I was there. It slowly dwindled into there was one at, at, at most of the schools instead of the two with the additional staffing. And so, um, what ended up happening, from my perspective, and I think Kelsey would agree with this, is it turned into, from a parent's standpoint, um, it's important that I, as a sped teacher, knew and understood every aspect of testing that was happening with that child, every ounce of that instruction and what it was going to look like. I would map out what we were doing with them, I was checking everything every single week if I needed to make a tweak because we're promising these parents, we're gonna make growth, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that this child who already struggles, where learning, that acquisition is not, uh, uh, their rate of improvement is not the same as others. So we're doing everything we can, so you have to be immersed in the instruction, but that also has to be portrayed on the IUP. Otherwise it just becomes a hope. It's not a living, breathing document that the parents want. And so, what happened, I think, is that because they needed that document, it, the, the sped teacher stopped teaching and became, the pairs were doing more of the instruction and the sped teacher was spending all the time on, they have to do all their triennials, they have to do all their initials, they have to do all of their progress monitoring. Um, a hundred percent, when I taught, I did all of that, I did not wanna give that up to anybody else. And so, um, so that just started supplanting some of the groups. That's, so then it just, so then you added more classified staff and less certified staff. That's, I feel like that's what kind of happened, I don't know that that was the intent, I don't know how it was sold or, but that was kind of the intent.
It's not more.
That's what it turned into, and so Kelsey has really tried to work back to establishing that. I think in addition to that COVID happened, and so now we're struggling, um, with finding certified people. I mean, I literally, I don't know if the dollar amounts accurately, but I could go, I say this.
Stop it.
I could do, be an online sped teacher, which that's not, I would not, I, from a parent's standpoint, I, but I could be an online special ed teacher and I, I can a hundred percent, I could see up to sixty kids cause you're not seeing them every single day, you're mapping out what they're, I'm not telling you its quality, but I could and make probably what I'm making as, sitting as an assistant superintendent. And that's where everybody.
I, I have several times this week.
That's what's happening with all SLPs, that's what's happening with school sites now because they can go, because you can't find people, they're not, they're no, they're not getting certified. And so they're in such dire, dire straits and just high demand that they can do virtual and, and offer more services that way so that there's, you know, more, and so, I mean, so.
And the paperwork is just atrocious.
Right, so Kelsey's trying to, and I think in, 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 you know, I'm speaking for her, but I think she, there's a certain number where you, the instruction is being compromised, she would like to get back to, at, when, I don't know whatever that number is, but to, but like some of our bigger buildings, a hundred percent she would like to get there. The problem is we can't find sped teachers. So, you know, that, certified sped teachers. So that's, you know, and that's everywhere, that's not just a Lakeland problem, that's everywhere, and I think it's a national problem. When you call colleges, I mean, they're begging people to get their sped degree, so, um, which, it, it's super sad to me cause it was my most favorite job. I mean, I was a Janet teacher too, but I would tell you my best years, I taught sped and loved it, but, I mean, you have to love it, it's not an easy job.
Yeah, I know we have quite a few in this area.
Yeah, so.
So one thing, just so you, just to add to that as far as how this whole thing morphed, but, um, under the previous superintendent, when we added those PSCs, the program.
Yeah.
Service four years.
She made that label too, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, she counted them as a halftime certified FTE. So when she was figuring out how many teachers each building got, it was, it was a one point, you have one point five, cause you have a certified teacher and you have this PSC person. And, which made that weighted caseload look a lot better than it actually was because it's still only one certified teacher.
Right.
But because the PSC was, the intent was to take the paperwork load off, it allowed the teacher to be present more often and is how she got there, but that was one of the very first things when Kelsey took the position that she wanted to get rid of was, was that. Not necessarily the position, but the way it was being used to calculate weighted caseload and how we were determining where the need was for schools. Because it, it's not accurate.
Right.
We're not accurately portraying the need.
And her goal has been getting special ed, certified trained special ed teachers in front of kids. We a hundred percent need our classified staff, but she just, the person making those decisions, she wants them to be, you know, in the know and immersed in what's happening.
Right.
Here's a conundrum.
So that brings me back to how do we determine how many paras are in a, I mean, just how many we can hire?
So with title, it's allocated by the state depending on, um, like, it's free and reduced numbers and so we're only allotted so much. And, um, Lisa has worked really hard, um, to make sure that if we get a hundred thousand for title, then all things related to title are, comes out of title, so we're not dipping into the, um, general fund. And to my knowledge, that's, this is the first time that's ever happened, correct? And so.
I probably, well, you, I, we didn't even have a, did we have a title program when you were here?
Title?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Betty Hifer wasn't originally a title school then, cause we had Reed paras, we didn't have title when we first opened.
Not much out, there wasn't much to it, I mean, there wasn't a lot of money in it.
But did you, did you have, did you use general fund dollars to, to enhance title?
So maybe back when Bob was the superintendent.
I think it changed after Bob left.
Um, and then obviously, I mean, sped is based on need, I mean, we have, we have lots of IUPs that come in with a one-on-one and legally you can't just change that, just be, you cannot say, well, we don't have that, so, so sorry. You can, at some point, if you're able to really truly evaluate the need, but you can't just say it based on the service. Um, so we, a lot of our one-on-ones come with a, this is what's in the IUP and so you have to hire. Um, and depending on how you, how it's worded in the IUP, um, nursing, if there needs to be CNA, if there need, like, you know, if you, unless it can be absorbed, and we always do try to look at that, can it be absorbed, do we have coverage, do we have? But if we don't, then you have to hire for it. If, if there is a true need.
There is the established caseload, unfortunately, you know, or a ratio.
Now, some states have a, um, some kind of guidelines, Idaho does not.
Yeah. So that makes it, makes it hard too, because then it's just up to a discretion, whoever's interpreting the assessment, you know, or whoever. That's, you know?
Yeah. We've tried to build a continuum so that we are looking through the full restriction as far as a least restrictive to a more restrictive. So we're not just jumping and making this big leap, but I, and I don't, I mean, Kelsey would have to tell you this, but I think we get a lot where it's dictated, it, it's coming from another district, so.
Yeah, that's a problem, that's, that's a serious problem because somebody else made the decision
Yep.
to, to put a child in that position and then we have to live with it. But that kinda leads me to something I talked to Lisa and Kelsey about a while back, and that is, you know, w- once a kid is on an IUP, a planned program, they don't have to be on that forever.
They shouldn't, if you're doing.
The, the, the ideal would be that whatever deficiency there is would be eventually overcome. So that, and I'm not talking about life skills, obviously, that one's different. But, you know, some of the lesser ones, kid starts out in third grade with an IUP, by the time he's in senior high school, he should be off that IP.
I, I, kinda, I think it depends. Right, it's on the eligibility, but what I would, what I would tell you right now that is, um, our reality is parents are coming from other states with a lot of support to Idaho where there isn't that much support. But because the IUP states it, we're obligated to provide it. So what our, what Kelsey has done a really good job of is we get the kids in, we provide the support that the IUP says we have to, we start to collect data, and then we hold an IUP team meeting and have a, a team conversation about, is this the least restrictive environment for this child in this school?
Right.
Um, but where Kelsey will put the brakes on is, and while the parent is just one member of the team and the law says they don't get to be the one to make the decision, it's a team decision. If we don't make the decision the parent wants, then the parent files a complaint with the state and ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, the parent prevails. Even when we've done everything right because they came with that IUP, somebody else found it important and, and we can't say no because it's a money thing, and that's where, that's what the parents always allege. So we sometimes get stuck between a rock and a hard place with these things.
Without a doubt.
And there, I mean, I would tell you, depending on what the eligibility category is, there are definitely eligibility categories where they're gonna need that support for the rest of their life, life skills being one.
Well, life skills, obviously.
Depending on where you are, like on the ASD continuum, I mean, there are definitely, if it's a TPI situation, if it's a deaf, it's a, like.
Emotional disturbance.
Well, mm, if it's a visual, like if you're visually, I mean, so some of those are for sure, but there are definitely ones where if we're equipping kids and getting them strategies, and so the example I would say is, there are people that are born bad spellers. They have figured out how to cope and adapt and figure out life. So once we can equip kids to start accessing things in a way, that is the point of a five oh four in an IUP, if we can figure that out. Um, there are gonna be kids that are always two years behind, they struggle a little bit, their acquisition of learning is not at the same as maybe somebody else, like that's normal, as long as we're continuing to equip them. Um, and so I, I feel like Kelsey's done a really good job of lots of the conversations about, are we supplanting some of those pieces and just saying, we are struggling learners, we're just gonna go at this really slow pace? And so just had this conversation on Monday about even some of the programs we're using. So they are not designed to be at a quick rate, so are we gonna close that gap? Or are we just elongating that gap? So how do we make that happen faster? And so those have been some of the conversations. Um, I mean, so it, 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 it does, it depends on the kid, it depends on the parents, and it depends on the teacher.
Well, to be sure, it depends on the kid and the, and the individual problem that he may, he or she may have. But, uh, you know, if you look at it from the standpoint of when we graduate a kid from high school, he's ready to go out into the white world. And to, to, to take a kid who, you know, has, I don't wanna specify anything. But at any rate, you know, the, the, the goal should be, by the time we graduate him from high school, whatever deficiency he has should have been basically overcome through coping skills or other, other means. So that he's ready to go out in the white world.
Give him tools.
And, and, you know, when secondary administrators tell me they're spending ninety percent of their time on ten percent of the population, that's a problem, I think. And so, when, we've got those dilemmas going on and to try to sort out how to deal with it.
Trying to tell you the elementary principal and I'm saying both.
And it's this whole, it's this whole ED category, emotional disturbance. I mean, for kids not, or ADHD, it's one of the two, those are the two. And ADHD can come with a misdiagnosis of conduct disorder, I mean, it's a whole, and, you know, you can go to, there are a lot of places out there where it's all subjective and if I have a short attention span, I'm gonna get a diagnosis. And for some, it's a hundred percent legit. Um, but I would tell you, those two categories are what's dominating our schools right now.
Yep.
The good news is, is even though it looks really rocky at the elementary level, we have those kids in those buildings for six years, when they come in as kindergartners, they're usually unidentified. And so our elementary staff is having to figure out, oh my gosh, what is, what's the trigger for this kid? What's going on with this kid? They work with the families. They, eventually by the time they get to second, third grade, maybe there's an IUP in place and they're building behavior plans and tweaking behavior plans. And, and for the elementary staff, I would tell you that they work their tails off to make gains with kids. So when they, we, I just had this conversation at Lakeland Middle School. So when, when they go to Lakeland Middle School, a kiddo who maybe had a blowout every day for the last quarter of school, cause they're sabotaging, because they don't wanna leave, you get him, you get him into the next level with a plan, and that kiddo has had two, two meltdowns in a semester. That's huge progress. But the ele, the middle school team doesn't know that, cause they don't know what he looked like when he was in the elementary school. They just know that, oh my gosh, this kid is, you know, kicking holes in walls, whatever. So we had, it's our job to also kinda work with staff to say, we're making, these kids are making growth, we're making gains, you know, we have to keep working the plan, because it's really easy to throw up our hands and say, this kid shouldn't be here when actually we're really doing a good job and they're, they're growing and they're, they're, they're making, they're more in tune with their bodies and regulating themselves. And then they go to the high school and you see them in the hallway, like, I had one kid when I was principal, Betty Kifer, he was the first, um, student I ever had that had emotional disturbance, he was my first encounter. And he, oh my goodness.
This is our first working together experience, so.
He was a title wave going through that school. And, um, I saw him at Lakeland High School in the hallway, talking to other kids and completely interacting in a very typical fashion, no special ed para anywhere around. And so I just asked about him and they said, oh hey, he's doing great. You would never know that that was a kid that was ripping computers off of desks and throwing them across the room because he was so frustrated. And so I, I just wanna put, plant that seed too, that our teachers do do a really good job and, and our elementary teams in particular really should be commended for the hard work they do because there's a lot of growth that happens by the time they release them.
Those consulting teachers are really good too.
Oh, yeah, they are, the whole team is amazing.
Yeah.
But, um, I know it gets frustrating sometimes, cause you look at individual kids and think, why are you behaving that way? But, um, there is growth there.
Yeah, and I'm in no way suggesting people aren't making every effort to help kids along the way.
I know you're not, I just wanna, sometimes I know you hear from people in the community that, you know, we've got kids. I know you're not, I just wanna, sometimes I know you hear from people in the community that, you know, we've got kids who are blowing out, and why are they in our schools, and because we owe them an education and.
But I mean, that's, you know, that's a great success story, and, and, and that should be the objective. For as many kids as we can create that objective for.
Right, right.
And I think for the most part it is, I, it's just, there's a lot of variables, you know? Um, you have the, the home element, you, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of things that we don't control, and, um, we have kids that come in at the middle school level and they've been dysregulated since they were five, and home life hasn't gotten any better, and so that plays a part, and so you're, you know, it's just, so, I, I feel like our people try really hard and they do a great job, but um, behaviors are definitely dominating. So I would tell you, they're not spending time on.
Realistic expectations to, you know, and
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes I, I think, you know, we need to be brutally honest with them, saying, you know, when this kid goes to work someplace, he's not gonna have these kind of accommodations that you're asking for, so between now and the time he gets to that level, we're gonna figure some things out here.
Yeah, I don't see, at, at least at elementary, I don't, I mean, we may, I don't think they're spending most of their time on specific learning disability. Um, I would tell you it's mostly the behaviors.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
Yeah, so.
And more PE and new assesses. Uh, they do, they need to burn all the.
And, and in all fairness, I mean, and when we do, even if it's a child that's not identified, that's what we do, because it's what they need, and that takes a staff member to go with them to give an extra recess, and it can't be the certified, because they have the twenty other kids, so I mean, that's when you look at this discrepancy in these numbers, that, those are the things that we're offering, I mean, I think that's why we have had so much success. These recess coaches at the elementary level have been just game, game changers for them, but it takes somebody being to, able to go out there to, so there's coverage. Um, or the kid that needs to be able to take a break, and, I mean, so that's the, you know.
I think kids nowadays do a lot of sitting, even in school, they do too much sitting and too much technology and not enough hands-on, face-to-face interaction, you know, like learning to deal with other humans, and I think a lot of, um, the environment can, could maybe be better for everybody, you know.
What's the, uh, what, if any, is the discretion at the state level with the lifelong issue of unfunded mandate?
They're not even discussing it.
It's not on everyone's radar.
I do think the state with this, this, with this new, these kind of merits, they're looking at recognizing across the state, people have talked about sped being unfunded, which is why.
So value added.
Mm-hmm, they're talking about the nineteen hundred for an IEP, um, ELL services, that's not an issue for us, but in other districts it's significant, and then the, um, you know, the free and reduced, the economically disadvantaged, so I, I mean, I think that they're hearing and that's their way of trying to provide that.
Nibbling around the edges.
I mean, it's better than.
Yeah, so we'll get for our discretionary operational money if this, if JFAC approves Superintendent Crichfield's plan. Um, every student is a thousand dollars, and then, um, nineteen hundred dollars additionally for every, every, um, special education student.
How, how much addition?
Nineteen hundred. And then I think they're trying to clear, I've heard, I don't know if this is true though, they're trying to clear some paths, so Medicaid, there's, I mean, Medicaid is pretty restricted. You can get, um, allocations for, you know, like, site testing and for different behavioral services, so trying to maybe open that up a little bit wider based on what the real need is, instead of, you know, some of the restrictions, so there's, I've heard there's been some discussion, but.
There's another pot of money that's, uh, well, part of it is new, so they have the SBA, then they have the, um, this per, per pupil, um, and then they, the other bucket is, um, the outcome-based measures, so our literacy dollars are in that pot, so the way the literacy dollars come to us, the first half of the allocation is just based on our enrollment. The second half of the allocation is based on the number of kids that either move from one tier to the next over the course of the year, or they stay at proficient. So they're looking to see, are we, are our kids making growth? They're gonna add, um, to that bucket, um, if it passes, um, for, uh, middle-level math ISAS. So we'll get a, we'll get half of the funding based on the number of kids at middle level, and then the other half of the funding will be based on moving kids a tier or keeping kids who are proficient proficient, so there'll be some, they're trying to incentivize the districts, because they know that we've kind of thrown up our hands and have said, this test is ridiculous, the whole state is struggling with it, and, um, they're just trying to entice us into thinking outside the box and trying to get the kids to perform better while they go through the process of an RFP to get a different test, so.
They are looking at, in addition to that CTE, some of that stuff, um.
And then, uh, graduate, we're gonna get additional money for graduation rates, and ours are some of the highest in the state. So that'll be money coming to us, it'll be the number of dual credit credits earned, and, um, Lakeland High School has one of the highest numbers, um, in the state. Timberlake Dawson has a, um, strong dual credit program, and then the other one is a CTE certification, so with K-Tech in our backyard, that will, all of that will be money for us that we haven't gotten before.
Good.
Yeah.
And we have no idea how much, um, that may be?
Not until JFAC.
Okay, finalizes.
Which is, so budget timeline, um, we will start getting information, uh, they meet, I think, March fifth, hopefully, if they don't change.
They told us they wouldn't start, uh, giving information, making decisions until after the fifteenth.
Of March, yeah, so in March and April, we should start receiving that revenue information and JFAC decisions on where we're at for revenue. Um, we use that information to start building the budget for next year, in the interim, we start looking at, okay, scenarios, if we have extra, what do we do if we don't, what do we do? Um, so we start looking at the staffing like you requested and everything, and then in April, May, we finalize kind of what those expenditures look like, what our priorities are. And then in June, we have the budget here, in July, we submit to the state, so it's kind of the rough timeline.
Right, and in the midst of that, we have to negotiate.
Yes, but hopefully.
Yeah, before we even really know the money we have to negotiate. But we can start with just the language part, right, the negotiated agreement, so when we.
Do know the state is recommending, um, a three percent change in employee compensation. Um, even though they're doing that, that doesn't flow down, it's exactly three percent to us, because they don't fund us fully.
Right, and I didn't see that they were doing that on this, on the career ladder, because they put so much in the career ladder, what I saw was three percent for administrators and three percent for classified, but it's three percent on the base salary for the state for administrators, which is significantly lower than what we pay. And, uh, three percent on the base salary for classified, which is also significantly lower than what we pay. So it doesn't translate to, I mean, it, it helps, but, it, yeah, um, but if you, if, if they're giving us money, and we already have this big gap in salaries between what we get and what we pay, and they give us a little bit more here, but we give a little bit more there, we never, we never close the gap, it's always the same. So it's just what can we afford? The other part of the conversation that, that, um, that we need to consider is, um, we made the move to that single column salary schedule last year. And as part of IBB conversation last year, we talked about that fifth year of AP money, instead of flowing through to the teacher, might need to actually become part of the
Base.
Base, the salary, um, base apportionment money.
Cool, yeah.
Um, to help fund that, and, um, so that needs to be part of our conversation too, as we're looking at, what does it cost us to run that salary schedule, um.
We, we don't want to give them any less than what they're currently receiving, but I think we could potentially build in language that says that if they get years one through four at whatever it's funded at, and then year five, we either do a stipend incentive, take them a, a small portion of it, or something, but that potentially needs to go back into the base, especially if we wanna continue to have the amount of certified staff that we have.
So those are all parts of the conversation that we've gotta have, as we're thinking about the budget and thinking about being ready for IBB.
Coming back to the state, the, um, I think part of that too is, uh, a tomato-tomato issue. Because remember, when the representatives were here, they're like, oh no, we did fund curriculum, like, we did it, and they're like, yeah, we did, we had a line item, you know? So they're voting and pushing through a main thing, but then by the time the money goes who knows where, we don't see any line item for curriculum.
Right.
You know, so that was, and she, I was just looking to see, um, and she had sent me those sheets, I can share them with you guys, or it's PDF, I guess, of the reports they're getting. You know, that shows when, so like, they get information down there that we never see, and vice versa. So the, the legislators will say, no, we voted, no, we did this, no, we didn't, we're saying, no, you didn't. So she sent me the spread, PDF spreadsheets of what they were actually given, I actually, this is the second time I looked at it, because we were in the middle of election, but.
Yeah.
That's the, the other mishap.
So when we come back together to continue working with Jessica on the budget, I made a note of the things that we promised Ramona we would bring. Um, is there, um, what else will be helpful, because I, um, I think we need to have the conversation about staffing and how close do we want to try to get to the numbers we're getting funded at? Um, we can ha- bring our enrollment sheet, so we can, um, and then we can roll forward to project for next year and look at class sizes.
Maybe we'd like to see Bob's sheets.
And, um.
Hope I can find it.
Yeah, so we can, we can provide what we would use, um, for the board, uh, to help kind of help us get a better estimate of how many teachers we're gonna need in our, at least in our classrooms, um. Is there anything else as we are starting to talk about, if we have to make some cuts, uh, programmatically, or is there information that would be helpful to?
Programs, a list of programs. So you say programs, what do you, what do you mean when you say programs?
So when I say programs, I'm meaning programs that are outside of the classroom. The extra things, like, like advanced learning program, like, um, the recess coordinator program, like, um, PSCs.
Yep.
We could talk about CTE programs, but that's funded separately, we could talk about, um,
All the special schedules.
Our specialists, um, but if we take those away, our teachers lose prep time, so.
Okay, but hold that, hold on. Cause like, you mentioned that PSC, the Program Support Coordinators. Okay, but then you just now toss that into programs, I don't understand how a person in a position is a program.
That's kind of what, yeah, that's what I was like, what, what do you mean when you say programs?
So physicians, I guess, so it's physicians and programs, and it's, it, in my, all I'm trying to do is provide to you things that are happening that we're funding that are outside of the classroom.
Ancillary.
Mm-hmm, um, if we're trying to keep the classroom whole, because that's where the magic happens with kids, then what other, I mean, so, so we're talking about all of the other, the ancillary positions, the counselors, the PD teachers, the music teachers, the, um, all of those kinds of, of things, so I wouldn't tell you, I don't think we have a lot of programs that I would say we could just say we're not gonna have this program, I don't, we don't have very many of those, because we, we run pretty lean as far as what we provide to kids. But, um, you know, at the high school level, we, we try to offer a student-centered master schedule, which means there are lots of elective opportunities. And when you start looking at, are we overstaffed at the high school level? The number of electives start to play into what that looks like, and we might have electives where we have ten kids in them, because of the way the master schedule's put together and the number of electives kids have to choose from, so that's, that's the other part of it, so I guess I just wanna provide to you things that will help you make, make you feel like you are making informed decisions as we start to make decisions about how to build this.
Well, what, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so basically anything outside of the statutory requirement of what we have to do, we don't get funded for.
Well, on some of the statutory, we don't get funded for it.
Well, I'm saying, we can figure it out, when they figure out, you know, how many teachers, how many counselors, how many blah, 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 blah. And we are supposed to supply, are supposed to provide music and art, I believe, but, um, anyways, yeah, all those things outside of that, I mean, unless the parents, that's where the levy came in.
Right.
You know, picks up all those things that we don't get funding for, you know?
Like our extracurricular.
Yep. Finds his spreadsheet, and we have a lot of information.
So, um,
Or match it up.
While you're sleeping and you wake up in the middle of the night at two o'clock and think, oh, I should ask Lisa to provide this to us, if you just shoot me, not at two o'clock in the morning, because I'm not looking at my computer, but if you just, um, shoot me an email and say, hey, for our next meeting, can you, can you provide this, then Jessica and I will work together to make sure that we have those things for you.
Well, for me, what would be appreciative is, I mean, cause you, you've got, you know, the, all these FTE people, we, we're, we've got six hundred and sixty-three of those. Uh, we're only getting funding for about fifty-two percent, because they're only funding for three hundred and forty-four point eighty-seven. And then, you know, we have all these stipends with money going out the door, and I, I respect the fact that you're gonna be telling multiple people, okay. For each building, each building has this, 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 and this, knowing what bodies are in that building, because you couldn't answer how do you determine with a concrete answer, so it would be beneficial to see, well, uh, John Brown has forty-two pares, and Betty Kiefer has thirteen, okay. Why, actually, what is going into it?
This is what I, that's what I sat with, uh, Brooks today, and said, there's this many pares at, at each of the schools, but that's why I was like.
That's a more spreadsheet that she provided to you guys.
Okay, right, but how do you, how do you determine that? Like, one school has six football coaches and one school has nine football coaches.
Like this references the IEP.
Right.
How is that determined, who, who makes that decision?
So there's actually in, I don't know if it's in the negotiated agreement or if it's an ancillary document, but through IBB, we said this is the base coaching staff for a football team, because you have to have the different positional coaches. And then you get additional coaches for e- every ten players or whatever, that was part of IBB, so that's how that happens.
Right.
So Timberlake High School's football team is smaller than Lakeland High School.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, I just was throwing that out.
But there is a, there is a formula written, it's not, we're not, we're willing to, you know, pick in that. Um, but the, uh, Brooks staffing sheet will give you the answer to the question you just asked, as far as how many, how many classifieds, how many pares are in that building, and how many teachers.
But that doesn't give us how that's determined, so I think that that's where Michelle's coming from, is knowing how each of those are calculated and, and determined to.
So like, today I was looking at some of the para comparisons, and of course, you will get Apple Elementary, and Apple Elementary, of course, is a lot smaller school, but they have a heck of a lot more pares. But that's because they have the life skills program there.
Okay, okay, see, and I figured it was going to be, you know, case by case, each school has a situation or whatever.
Man, it's truly based on.
That was the demographics I asked for over and over. We should be able to, there should be a document, I mean, it's pretty one-on-one, that shows me Apple Elementary and all the demographics, I have, you know, three hundred students, thirty-two teachers, two sped, so many pares, you know, that qualifies for free and reduced, like, there should be no question, this should be like a single living document. Like, anybody should be able to do, to do that, like, just basic management, it's the demographics of the, of the school, you know? You can find a lot of that, but you have to go to all these federal sites, and then the state site, and then try and build your own spreadsheet, and then update as the things change. But this should be a document in the district, it should be a single thing, so that you can properly manage, like, it should be one place. And then on top of that, the other thing we always hear about is, what is the school's budget? Right, and then what does its budget look like, what went in, what came out, I mean, if, if this lived, we would ask like almost no questions. Because it would all be, I mean, that's in, in the world I live in anyways, that's a very bottom, you know, every department, every, everything has, you know, all of that information.
I get that, that's what I, that's what I create for the city, so, yeah.
We have all that information, so all we need to do is pull it together and put it into a, into a, or you're talking like a workbook, so each school has its own tab along the bottom, and we.
Yeah, 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 that would be, yeah, that would work too, but, you know, with all the pieces of software we have, just like, I was having a conversation a while back with the Adobe thing, because we were looking for workflows, the reason I asked was because Adobe.
I was having a conversation a while back with the Adobe thing because we were looking for workflows. The reason I asked was because Adobe does do workflows. But I didn't know what licensing we had. All these pieces of software that we have in, in Skywards and ERP software, which is what I write for a living. It should be able to do all that, or it's not ERP. If, if, if Skyward is a true ERP system. This is a basic functionality thing in, it should be in the system. So it could be too, as time goes on, we need more training on what we actually have. Well, we're actually in a position right now, and we'll bring this to the board, but, um, they're, they're moving Skyward from kind of a. Being housed on the, your hard drive of your computer.
The Oregon Trail system.
To actually web-based, fully web-based. And so we're gonna have, there's gonna have to be an investment on our side to, to make that, um, transition. But we have to do it because that other part finally is falling off. And it's, um, they've gone, they went to, uh, training, two-day training with them. And. It, it has a lot more functionality and does probably more. Yeah, I looked at their website and there's all kinds of stuff. That's why between Adobe and Skyward and some of the other things, I don't know how we would need much more. And I don't know why we live in Google so much.
We do, we do need to do the transition. That's the biggest thing, the report functionality and their upgraded platform is a deal.
Well, even all of their other pieces of software though, I mean, they're a huge company and all their other pieces of software that are basically a bolt-on, right? You just buy that extra piece, would save a lot of time and effort and all that. But I didn't know what pieces we were utilizing or not utilizing or whatever. Oh, the other one, what is the one that we use for the, uh, special ed for the?
Ed plan?
Yes, ed plan also had a bunch of bolt-ons.
An ed plan is through the state, um, and they're out to bid for that right now, correct?
Yep. Anyways.
We don't currently pay for it. It's free.
Yeah, there's, uh. So did you ever get workflows figured out?
Yeah, I, I've got something going.
Oh, okay. Say, cause Adobe does do all of that. That's why I asked what we're licensed for, because we might already own that. And just a matter of training and implementation.
When would you like to meet again?
I don't know, there's a lot of information to digest. And I think a lot of information to even come up with appropriate questions or like see if we overlook the answers. You know, or something. That's my input. I don't know that we need. We're not gonna get any good information that's usable from the state until probably after March fifteenth, when, when JFAC does their work.
So that I wouldn't, right.
I feel like we need to have some idea of revenues so that we can make some intelligent decisions.
Yeah. When do we start IBB?
Uh, well.
I have us on March nineteenth. We're doing a work session at six PM.
For IBB. For us.
That's for us.
It's just for the negotiating agreement to start looking at language, right?
And then hopefully you have some ideas about where we are at the bottom line.
Yeah.
What we're sending our soldier in with.
Would you like the information that you requested as a follow-up in a board meeting? Or do you want it to wait until that March nineteenth? Or whenever we meet in March for the next work session?
March is fine.
Yeah, I'm good with March. To keep it all in the same conversation instead of mixing conversations.
Oh, that was over there. And that was in the work session. And that was in the meeting. And that was.
What if we, we didn't plan for Wednesday, March twentieth?
Then we're nineteenth and twentieth? Is that, I just was asking if that.
Yeah, it would be nineteenth and twentieth. And twenty-one for me, so. As your policy. Yeah. Let's see, are we twenty?
Not enough.
This is true. Twentieth works for me.
Let's see.
So the, so the nineteenth is IBB discussion and the twentieth will be, uh, budget workshop?
Work session.
Work session. Since we're gonna be two nights in a row, do you want us to, we can plan on having dinner for us?
No, I don't think that's appropriate. We're good.
The board has a big budget to spin. Oh no, we lost twenty-some thousand, didn't we? On that one night. Only in one night. Whoops, took that out.
I just have one question. Is there any truth to what that little graph shows there?
Um, probably, but the reality for STEM charter is that if kids are non, not proficient at the end of the school year, they're dis-enrolled. They only keep the proficient kids.
And I know that, you know, but. And I understand what they're doing and why they're doing it. It just doesn't shed very good light on us.
I agree. But if, if they were ever to be sued, they would lose because they're not doing what they're, they're legally required to do. They're not providing special education. If kids need special education, they're, they're told that they don't have a good fit and they need to leave. Um, if they have any kind of a discipline issue, they're just removed from school. They don't deal with that. So they only keep the highly, um. For the high-performing proficient kids. So it's super easy. If we did that, we could have those numbers too. But we, we don't do that.
We just need to become a charter.
We take all of our blueberries. We keep them.
Who, don't say that, cause that's what they tried to do up in West Bollard. So let's not even bring that up.
They tried to make it a, a charter, Mr.?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, they tried to do, uh, yeah, they tried to.
So, I'm, it's, I'm sure that's accurate. But they also have very tiny little class sizes and they only keep the high performing kids.
I, I brought that because you might end up getting some pushback somewhere.
People ask me that. And then I just ask them to look at their student, at their special education population and their students on behavior forms and start asking.
Take a dream as a crop, you're gonna shine.
Exactly.
All right. So on that note, uh, we can go ahead and adjourn the budget workshop session. It is seven fifty-seven.
Yay, good job, you.
Amen, good night.